Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this work session. It'll be our New Horizons, and it will also include an executive session. We may take the liberty to go into executive session if time allows, perhaps to break up our New Horizons. To do that, we'll certainly take that, might take that liberty. So we welcome everyone for being here. I know we have some members of our Municipal Development Commission, Executive Board. Appreciate you guys being here, and Dr. Hallman, thank you. And of course, our great staff, so thank you. All right, we're going to start this off. We apologize, starting a few minutes late now, but we want to get rolling, be respectful of everyone's time. And I'm going to recognize at this time, our City Manager, Mr. Stuart Beanbo. So, Mr. Beanbo, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you. This is, I guess, the second part of New Horizons. And I guess, for the record, we have Councilwoman Gregory is on the telephone, and everyone else is present on council. This is our second part of this. We'll have a third part Monday, and it's kind of at the end of the New Horizons format. After presentations, we will want to get council input and goals, so we can kind of focus on what to look for and paint our eyes to this upcoming year, budget year, and then forward as appropriate. But tonight, we are glad to have, for starters, representatives from our Municipal Development Commission. The Chairman Keith Wood is here, and his Executive Committee Vice Chair Chris Farines, and David Jamison, and also Dr. Tom Hallman is here. He's been very helpful guiding the AMDC as they work through reviewing and sort of putting together the Economic Development Strategic Plan document that has been prepared for AMDC, that is in draft form, but I think might be very much closer to a final form. But I've asked Keith, as part of this New Horizons exercise to come, along with Dr. Hallman, to make a presentation, and I'm going to turn it over to Keith. He has, there's a packet, as part of your packet, there's some material provided by AMDC, and Keith distilled it down to a more manageable format, which the City Clerk Miss Wrightout has passed out to you, and it should have been at your desk. So Keith, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Stuart. Thanks to everyone for providing the opportunity for me to be here this evening, and also for my colleagues, Chris and David and Tom, to join you and to share with you what we've been working on for almost the last year, almost the last year. I think we started in May, meeting formally as a commission, and been working on many things, and we think we've got quite a few accomplishments. But the goal tonight is to walk you through our goals and objectives. There is a funding request at the end of the presentation. I'm going to go through nine slides. If we want to go into more detail, for example, if you want to go through parts of the AECOM report that are not directly linked, or not directly in our hemisphere, if you will, then I would ask Tom, Dr. Hallman, to come up. Tom led us through a strategic planning session over the last two months, and he can kind of help us go through that. But nonetheless, the goal here is to really take us through the slides at the highest level. You should have the slide package. You should also have with you in your possession, the nine-page document we sent back in January, which details the goals and has a funding request at the back. And then I also want to reference one other document, because we're going to talk at length about that in just a moment, too, and that's the AECOM Draft Master Plan. The city staff put an RFP in place with AECOM. AECOM delivered that plan after about a year's worth of work. A lot of work went into this, so we want to make sure and reference that document as well. So what you have in front of you in the slide presentation right now is our mission statement. I'm not going to read that. You can do that very easily. We have been hard at work over the last nine, 10 months, in putting together our charter, our bylaws, setting in an established way our commission, who's doing what, who wants to do, what they want to volunteer on. We're not paid staff, we're all volunteers. I remind everybody of that. I have to remind my wife and others of that quite often. And then also, we've been successful in working with Tim and the staff in securing property for some development in the downtown area, the Williamsburg property, which I'm sure you've heard about that, and we can go into that in a little, in a moment if you'd like to. And then the AECOM report, just mentioned that. The draft was provided to us in December. We took about three to four weeks and several meetings, and then had a Zoom call with our commission. It was made public. Several of you were also invited, and hopefully you attended. Where we went through the report and really decided, okay, what was important for the city, what was important for our commission, what was in our hemisphere. There's five, 55 actions that are in that report. We boiled it down to 27 of those that we either directly or indirectly feel like the commission has responsibility for. The other 27 are important. That's not to discount those other 27 actions, but we don't feel like they're really in our area of influence. There may be others, and I think the city will have to make some determinations, either through council or staff, as to how we want to address those other 27. And then also, in the process, we identified key activities that were either not highlighted in the report, or that we didn't feel there was as much depth in the report to go through. Initiatives such as marketing for the city, there were some initiatives there with respect to I-20 development, some signage type of issues with I-20 infrastructure development for I-20, so we wanted to highlight that. The Whiskey Road Corridor project, that's hugely important for us. That can make a huge difference for us from a travel, from a development standpoint. We're hopeful, crossing our fingers, that there's going to be some money coming through the state, or perhaps plutonium settlement funding to help us complete that project. Well, there's a lot that's got to be done if we're successful with that, so we want to highlight that. All right, first goal. I think everyone's aware, either through the press or through other presentations, that the community is successful in securing some other funding for some major projects that are potentially going to be located, or will be located, over at USC Aiken. The first is the AMDC, excuse me, the Advanced Manufacturing Facility. $50 million worth of DOE federal funding has been appropriated for that project. And then the South Carolina National Guard Dreamport, 15, I think, has been designated through the National Guard. There's another 15 that's needed from a matching perspective, that hopefully we can get through the state. So that's $80 million, if my math is correct, that's coming to our community, that's coming over to USC Aiken. So we feel that there's an opportunity for other development, and we think the commission, the city, should take advantage of those opportunities, and we need to be at the forefront and leading in making sure those opportunities come to reality. There's going to be funding that's needed to hopefully acquire parcels of property, to bring in other business investments, to push technologies, innovation there, potentially create infrastructure that may be needed. So we'd like to be at the leading edge of creating that district, and it's going to require some funding to be able to do so. You guys know that project. You've been discussing that for years. You know it better than I do. But I'm a little concerned sometimes we don't think about what's beyond, what's going to be needed with that project, if and when it comes to fruition, i.e. land development, retail space, housing that's going to be in those areas. So there's a huge amount of investment that's going to be needed in that area. Some of it is multiple modal transportation, like sidewalks, bicycle paths, things like that. And then we also see it as a great opportunity to enhance the gateway for our city, which means that you're going to have parks, lighting, signage, pedestrian walkways, things like that that's going to be needed. Goal number three, target areas for growth. If you've read the AECOM report and you've read our information, you can see very readily that we feel like there's a lot of opportunity for growth in Aiken, in areas that perhaps have either been blighted, or perhaps have not, we haven't paid attention to. We've called out in our documents to you those areas, both in the north, southeast, and west side of Aiken. We think each area has opportunity. We're going to be asking for funding to get us started, seed funding, and hopefully some other funding down the road to help us with residential development, revising zoning ordinances, infill and redevelopment of derelict properties. We probably will be issuing RFPs for land that may be needed for housing. We want to make sure and push for incentive awareness, land acquisitions, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention the downtown core development. There's a lot of interest in downtown Aiken. It is an icon. We were on the phone this afternoon with someone from another community talking about moving in here because of the downtown of Aiken, and it has a lot of potential, and we should not lose sight of projects like the Aiken Hotel, the old hospital property, administrative property, and others that we need to look at. Goal number four, make Aiken more business friendly. Perhaps we didn't word that appropriately, but what we're really trying to get at here is to create an environment to expand business growth, to be able to work with small, medium, large-sized businesses, to make sure that Aiken is the place to be. With that, we want to invest in minority and small women's business development, small business incubation, assist with grant programs for development, maybe enhancing existing grant programs or developing new ones, and then reinvigorate the main street of downtown Aiken. And one of the recommendations I'll cover at the back end of the presentation will also enhance that. Okay. What are we, what are we going to really be asking of the city council tonight? The first thing we're asking is that you formally accept, adopt the AECOM report. There was a lot of effort that went into that by AECOM, of course, but the staff, business leaders in our community worked with them to develop that report. Some of the information we've seen before, heard before, some of it was not new, some of it is. But I think I can speak for our commission in saying that we have a concern that this report, if not adopted, if not managed, will go on the shelf and collect dust. And I hate to be so harsh, but that's the last thing we want. There's a lot of things in this report that, if implemented correctly and timely, can make a huge difference for our city. So we want the city to adopt the plan. We, as a commission, have done so. And then also, the second part of that, we feel like there's so much to be done in the plan, and it has so much potential, that a dedicated project manager should be assigned to implement the plan. That project manager would work with our commission, that project manager would work with city council, and that project manager would also work with all the organizations, all the entities in Aiken, to make sure that what's being needed, what's implemented in that plan is successful. Next recommendation, number two, and that is implement a marketing plan. The city has a marketing plan, to my knowledge. That knowledge tells me that it's pretty much focused on tourism and recreation. It's not focused on economic development, enhancement, growth for our city. We believe there's enhancements that could be made to the city's website. There's additional marketing that could be needed, that is needed for business growth for a lot of the goals that have been outlined before you earlier in the presentation, and also are in the AECOM report. And I'll identify the funding that's needed for that in just a moment. Okay, the last slide, and this is really getting down to the brass tacks, so to speak. We're before you this evening, asking you to fund some of these initiatives that we believe can really jumpstart us here in the next 12 months. I mentioned the need for the project manager. You see a number there that's probably a little low. We may have to adjust some of those numbers, depending on who the project manager may be, what's the reporting requirements, what's the structure, is the person going to be a contract employee, is the person a retiree in the community, is the person a city staff employee? All those things need to be considered, but nonetheless, we do feel the need strongly that that individual is needed. Site acquisition pool of 250, that sounds like a large number, but when it comes to acquiring property, it's not really a large number, it's a small number. That's a number to get us started, and we're hoping that we can acquire, that funding will come before coming in other ways, through our innovation and others, to bump that number up, and that's an initial request. Economic development marketing, that number may be a little high. We might want to adjust that down, move some of those monies into the project manager account. Our line item, economic development marketing, though, is desperately needed. We believe that that needs to be done over the next 12 to 24 months. The next number is 50K for workforce development and business incubator. That's tied to the initiatives that I mentioned earlier that are forthcoming over at USC Aiken. And then the last number is 75K for professional services. I think everyone's aware that when you're acquiring property, when you're looking at projects, you've got to have the capital, the resources available, to be able to hire a lawyer, to hire an environmental firm, a real estate attorney, whatever that may be, to make sure that you're getting the right deal, the property is being acquired in the right way. So that's what that number is for. So in total, our request is $500,000 for this year. I'll stop there and entertain questions for the commission. David and Chris and Tom can also weigh in.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment.
Okay.
This is good work. This document is all-inclusive. You guys thought of everything and everybody, and that really, really makes me feel good. So I just want to thank you for putting all of your time and energy into this plan. It's really good.
Thank you. Thank you. Questions?
I would just echo the Councilwoman's comments. It's very comprehensive. I think it weaves, weaves through what the AECOM report kind of guides us on, and it clearly shows, and I think our commission is moving in the direction exactly what we intended. And sometimes it's to remind us of things we know, sometimes it's to push us in areas that maybe we haven't seen, and it's, I think it's going to be a great partnership. So thank you, thank you for this presentation. Are there any other questions or comments?
I'll make a comment.
Sure.
This, yeah, this great report. It seems to me on your marketing plan, you're going to have to get ADDA and tourism involved, so you all have a cohesive program working together. You don't want three different programs out there. And your funding requirements, I personally think are really low, so.
Well, they're willing to raise it if you'd like.
It's a start.
Kind of seed funding to get us started.
Yeah, that was what I was going to add, that it's a start. That's a pretty conservative number. I was waiting for the million-dollar question, and it's actually a half a million dollars. So that's, it's pretty conservative as to the sites, especially when you get to site acquisition. You're right, but we can get going.
Well, there's no secret. You guys have seen our letters requesting plutonium settlement funding. We don't know where that's going to go. We're very hopeful that some of the funding that we've requested will be forthcoming through the city and hopefully could be used for some of these purposes, too. So that process is in work, or is being worked as we speak. And then to Ed Waltz's point with respect to working with others, we have every intent to do so there yet, not only just on the marketing side, but just about in every goal we've mentioned, whether it's working with the city, or Aiken Development Corp., or Downtown Development, you know, we plan to do that.
All right.
Again, echo my colleagues. Thank you. I thought the same thing when I looked at your breakdown of 40,000 for a project manager. I thought, mm, if we get someone that's really going to do the job, we're probably going to have to pay more than that, because it's going to be something we want them to be doing full-time. And so, but you said it depends on who it is and how that, so that plays into the whole thing, but I think you all have thought of, as Councilwoman Dick said, about everything, and I appreciate your, I've gone over it and gone over it, and you know, things have come to mind, and I think as we go through this, we're going to be asking questions and looking at things, but we have to start. And the marketing is a huge thing. I think we have discussed that on council, that we need to do more of that, so that people understand that Aiken is open for business, and we want you here, you know? So again, thank you. And we're, you know, it's, I guess we have to just chew on it a little bit, right?
Yeah, I understand. You know, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge one other person, and that's Tim O'Brien. You know, Tim has worked tirelessly in trying to make sure that we're moving the city forward. He's working with a commission that wants to move very, very fast, but we all have day jobs, so he's doing a lot of the legwork, a lot of the heavy lifting for us, and he's doing a great job, so thank you, Tim.
He's trying to add that 40,000 dollars to his salary.
While we're all gathered here together, and not to distract from what Keith has to say, except for I mean, that was Tom. To augment it and make sure that we're all clear while we're all in the same room about the project manager position, that's really seen as a community leader kind of a position, because the 27 points that we talked about in the AECOM report, that really aren't directly related, but are critical to our development as a community, could be anything from K through 12 education in the school district, healthcare, higher education, and really the thought behind that, and you guys can correct me, but I mean, that was an idea of somebody who's a transformational figure in our community, who could speak equal to equal to city council members, to the city manager, to the superintendent of education, to the CEO of the hospital, but really marshal the overall effort while the commission is taking on the yeoman work of actually doing development projects. There are arts considerations that a lot of people have brought to me, and the commission really isn't well-tooled to be involved in increasing the arts activity in the community, but it would be great to propel economic development. We think that that transformational community leader that we're calling a program manager would be that kind of person that could reach out and help symphony development and ballet and the arts that would really strengthen the community, along with the financial investment that we're seeking from new residents and new businesses. So I just want to make sure to kind of point out what that role really is.
Keith, if I can comment, when we talked about establishing this AMDC commission, each one of us had a recommendation to make to the body, and we were quite selective. And I know we've had a few changes since we started, but we could not have a better team than we have right now. We know that all of you are busy, but yet, this is important to you. Aiken is important to you, and the love of this community. We don't have enough to pay you, can't pay you, but it is through your service that you're giving back, and we will be able, or my grandchildren will be able, to reap the returns that I can see, that you, based on your investment, your time and your energy, that we'll see this for centuries in this community if we follow the leadership that you're providing right now. So I'm saying thank you for your time and your effort and your investment, and AECOM as well, because AECOM has been busy under the guidance of Tim O'Brien with their plan that they submitted to us. But there's a lot to do, and a lot that is coming, and five to 10 years from now, we will look back and say, wow, this was great for Aiken.
Thank you, Les. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, I, and hopefully we got time, I'll ask Chris, or David, or Tom, is there anything you'd like to add, anything that I missed, any other comments?
David was contemplating coming up and saying, we really want a million dollars, not 500. I could see it in your eyes, David, so I really know to let the minutes reflect. Go ahead, Keith.
I won't comment on that.
You just agree with him.
Well, that was, that was my, was going to be my question.
Have an opportunity. We feel, we feel very good about the number that we proposed. Obviously, we're not shy. If we have a desperate need, if there's a project that's going to make a monumental difference to Aiken, we wouldn't be shy about coming back and saying, help. But we think it's our job to get started and to get this rolling. And I must say, on adoption of the AECOM plan, that's desperately needed, because it also enables the city, the staff, and us to go to other entities, other companies, to say, this is what we're doing, will you help? But if you don't adopt it, we can't do that. And a lot of people are going to say, where's your plan? And I'd love to be able to say, here it is.
Have we got money into new budget, Stuart, for this?
Yes.
How much have we put aside?
I don't have a number yet, because we're still trying to get the budget balanced. But it'll, we're going to shoot to get 500. What I may even do is try to front-load some of it this fiscal year, so we could potentially come with a budget adjustment. That way, they don't have to sit on their hands till July 1st.
Yeah.
Number 20 is, AMDC, yes?
Thank you.
I think that we should do that.
Again, I don't have a firm answer. We just got the budget documents from council, or excuse me, from the departments, February 22nd, so less than 10 days ago. So we'll have a draft budget for council around the end of March 1st of April, but certainly, this is the purpose of this exercise, is to, is to help us get that budget document to contain what council wants. I don't even know how many cars Public Safety is going to get. We're just not to that point yet. You know, we talked about that last time.
Coming out of the pandemic, this is the perfect time to get this kicked off and get moving, and we need to hit the ground running.
Agreed.
Totally agree.
Agreed.
All right, and here's your hope.
Yes.
Keith, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
We appreciate it. Keith, you got your finger in your chest.
Coming up, Chris. Come up, come up, Chris. We can't hear you, come on.
You got a mess going. Hey. I appreciate all the support you've given us, and especially Tim O'Brien's, and what we're asking for is important, but please keep in mind, I know y'all have been working really hard on the plutonium settlement monies. This is really peanuts compared to the money that's there, and the money that you have put a marker down, I think, with our delegation, whoever you're talking with. But we would encourage you to continue to apply the, I don't want to say pressure, but the support you have on that, because the city of Aiken has the vast plurality of workers, of anyone, the Savannah Riverside workers. We've got all of the plutonium, or most of it, in Aiken County. There, you're talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars. So I appreciate the mayor and Stuart and council putting a little bit of pressure there and making sure we don't lose sight of getting what is a reasonable amount of that settlement. It significantly dwarfs this amount. This would be put to really good use for us, but I know you've sent letters and all, but I don't know when that decision's going to be made, but let's continue to push and make sure we get our fair share. I think that's going to be transformational for the city in a much bigger way. So I want to make sure, I know Keith talked about it, but I just wanted to underscore that. Thank you for continuing to do that, but we got to push that across the goal line.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. We're going to continue down with our presentations. Next, I think we have our project review. Ms. Lester?
As a side, hey, we lost her.
Okay, we'll, we'll come and dial, but Joy does have, she was sort of teamed up with Mike last time, and we ran out of time. I know one thing council's asked about is trying to get a handle on prioritization. You know, we obviously have a lot of projects here, but you'll see that we've worked hard to try to give, and again, it's a fluid list. If council wants to move stuff up, or say there's a need, economic development, or an emergency, you know, the list is some, is pretty fluid, but we did try to give an idea of when the projects can be done. So thank you, Joy.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
I wanted to start tonight with a review of our CPST projects and basically under CPST 2, there's 2, there's very little left. The majority of the funding is remaining in Hitchcock Woods, which will roll basically into the CPST 3 Hitchcock Woods project whenever we do the erosion control, you know, project that will be coming up pretty soon. One thing I wanted to point out is that we are looking at possible uses or reuse for our landfill. There's about 65 acres there that could potentially be redeveloped for something, cleaned up and redeveloped. Anything from solar, you know, a solar farm to maybe even an office building with parking lot to encapsulate if we need to, any kind of issues. So, there's potential there for, you know, something, and it's on the bypass. It's right beside our new public safety building. And so, you know, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, but it could be something that we could use in the future for something. And so, probably in the next month or so, there, we, I have a, a environmental team that will be there doing some, you know, querying to see where we are, like what we have, how much waste we have, you know, what can, you know, potentially other, you know, scenarios for cases that, you know, have been done around the state and the country for that property.
Excuse me for interrupting you. Has DEHAC, what is the latest report we have from DEHAC in reference to that landfill?
It's unregulated. The, the closed piece of it that we have is unregulated. We have a small C and D portion, but that's, that's not an issue because we don't.
That was part of our agreement when we closed the landfill in 86, that it would be in that condition.
How large?
65 acres.
Thank you.
And there's no emissions coming from the 65 acres?
Well, we're going to do some further investigation. That's what we're going to be doing this month, just to kind of see. They, we, we had some monitoring wells for methane way back when. So, we just need to revisit, see where we are, see if, you know, those, if anything's changed, and whether we need to take any kind of further action on that. So, it's just, it's just, you know, potential. And if nothing else, we cap it, put a solar farm out, and there you go. You know, we have something that we're giving back to the power grid, so it won't be unused property.
And I want to say too, remember CPST 2 and 3, all that money has been collected, so that is, is cash on hand for these projects. And if I can go back with Hitchcock Woods to give, we had the presentation late last year, that has been moving along. A, the, the plans were submitted to engineering for review, and it's 60% plans and comments have been given and back to the engineer to be answered. So, it's, it's proceeding, they have not let any moss grow under, under the feet of that project.
So, moving down to our CPST 4 projects, I just submitted on Monday a grant for ADA improvements for Smith Hazel. It's about a $600,000 project, fortunately, see, we don't have that amount of money allocated for Smith Hazel, but we did receive a $300,000 reimbursement from our LWCF grant that we had for the Week Center, whenever we did the playground and fencing over there. So, we're going to offset some of these costs with grants and then try to leverage those funds with additional grants, you know, to make that project whole for the, for the future. And then we'll, you know, follow on that with additional clock improvement with another LWCF grant in the future. Do y'all have any questions about CPST? Of course. Okay. So, moving forward, we are getting ready to wrap up our 2018 EPA Brownfield Assessment Grant. We submitted a, a new grant for 2021, and we're waiting to hear whether we have been selected for that to continue the assessment efforts that we have. We are basically, we will be out of money for, actually, pretty soon, and so, that's actually a good thing because it shows our need, it shows that we've been focusing on the projects that we were targeting in the grant. And, and so, we hope to just continue that with this additional assessment grant and then hopefully follow that on with a cleanup grant in the future, but you know, there's other details that have to be worked out with that. One thing that we have to, or is available to us is a state Brownsville grant, and they have a loan forgiveness of up to, I believe it's $200,000 for cleanup. So, let's say you have a million dollars of cleanup, they'll forgive up to like 200,000, and then the loan for that is like a 1% grant. So, that's an option that we have, you know, if we decide we want to go in that direction.
Is there Jackson property in this? Are they part of that part of what we?
That's part of the 2018 assessment grant, yes.
Joy, you're excellent at, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure I understood. We have that under contract, right?
No, the Municipal Development Commission does.
But we did have it under contract.
To purchase?
Yeah.
No, the Municipal Development Commission did.
City hasn't entered into that at all?
No, it's the, it's the AMDC.
Okay. Have we transferred money to them to buy it?
Yes, you approved that with the CDB G CARES Act, that one-time funding.
Okay.
That's all.
Sorry. That's all I got to say about that.
Joy, I said you're excellent at going to seek additional funding for us, and this is quite a list of, of money, of projects, if you could put it that way. What we don't have, can you give the, the grant amount, the approximate amount with these funding? And I'd like to have a copy of that if you don't mind.
House grants as well as?
Yes. That'd be great.
And if I may, just to sum up the items, Fairfield Street Bridge, we have received a draft MOU. We got it, I think, week before last from DOT, and we're reviewing it, and then we're going to set up a meeting with the delegation members and I guess the, certainly at a minimum, the council and Walts and the mayor, since it's their district, and then before it comes to council as a whole. But I can tell you, the MOU meets what DOT has been telling us. They're offering us the $1,300,000 in exchange for us, they returned the bridge over to us. We would receive that money. We would have to use that money in other funds to build it back as is. We would then also have possession in perpetuity of the bridge as well as Fairfield Avenue from Richland to South Boundary. That's what's in the draft MOU. And again, we'll have a, some discussion with DOT in the coming weeks before, I guess, we have a meeting with the council on determining whether or not we proceed with that. And also, if I may, this is not on the list, however, it is related to CTC and of interest to council, a very recent vintage Silver Bluff Road from Whiskey to Hitchcock Parkway has been accelerated for paving. Initially, it was going to be paved late this year, but they have, DOT has decided to do an addendum to the current paving, so it will be paved in the next, we'll say 90 to 120 days. It'll probably be less than that, but certainly by the beginning of the summer, it should be paved based on the information I received from DOT today.
That's excellent news. Excellent news.
A couple of projects I just wanted to point out. RA, we have a economic development project, Parallel Sewer, that is basically tagging on to the undergrounding or the boring under I-20 at Highway 1. And so, that project started about a month ago. On March 15th, I will be submitting a grant for the Recreation Force Main Project, so that will basically take some of the capacity issues off of Recreation to kind of buy us a little bit of time and send that to, in a different direction so that we have additional capacity for development on the east side of town.
Yep, Recreation, that is located, Citizens Park is where that, so that 27 acres that Maybaum is going to be developing off of Old Airport. Again, that as well as some of the other potential development that could occur in that East Pine Log Zeus area, this would help speed that up.
Joy, I have a question regarding our grants, and this is to the city manager as well. When we look at Brownsville grants, we normally are thinking about contaminating property. A question is leading to distressed communities. Are there grants that we can go after, and you know what I'm talking about when I said distressed communities, that we can apply for even with matching funds?
That's cool.
To help with distressed communities?
Yes. I mean, and just like before, they were talking about workforce development, there's a lot of workforce development grants out there. It's to, to what degree does the city want to get involved with, you know, trying to train people up for jobs or, you know, redevelopment type things? I mean, you know, just like the assessment grants, you can, we can apply for a workforce development grant. Actually, Tech has done that, and they actually trained some people maybe 10 years ago to do remediation. And so, you know, those grants are out there. How do we partner, you know?
With someone to?
That's right. And do we have time to, for somebody to negotiate that arrangement? So, it's, you know, there, there's a lot of grants out there, but you, as you know, they're very specific or, you know, whatever that, that is written for.
We have areas and pockets of areas in our community that we know that it's distressed, and I don't see it in our budget in terms of working with these communities. So, somehow, we got to address this if we're going to look at it holistic with our community. So, I, I did see some of it in our commission's plans in terms of addressing it, but we got to put some money.
Yes, and I'm, I was glad to see, and I think between that request and some of these other opportunities, funding opportunities, I think that opens the door for some of that and some partnerships with other local governments, whether it's, could be, it just sounds like some, potentially the COG could be involved with, involving with the workforce element of it.
Yeah, the workforce is, is what COG can get involved with, but this involves housing and really cleaning up some of these areas, and I don't know how we have, that's another topic that we've got to all address and be concerned about.
Agreed.
Any questions about grants? Looking forward for the airport, I see this as a very important economic development tool. You know, I, before I came to the city in a past life, I worked for Georgetown County. We had two airports and no interstate. And so, for us, that was a huge economic development tool. And so, I would hope that we use, you know, the airport as well as of, in a, you know, our efforts to bring those people, industries, you know, make our presence known and use the airport as, as a development tool in that respect. So, there's a lot of things going on out there. We are looking at adding a shower for pilots whenever they fly in because a lot of times, you know, they'll have a long flight, they want to know exercise, but they have nowhere to, you know, refresh themselves and be able to be ready whenever they're, you know, their people are ready to fly back wherever they're, they're going. And so, we're working on adding that and upgrading our restrooms on the old side of the terminal, as well as adding an outdoor restroom for whenever the FBO and the terminal office is closed and people flying in after hours, because they don't have somewhere to use. The furniture that is currently in the lobby area is about 20 years old, and it's looking pretty sad. And so, it's the budget this year, we're looking to upgrade that furniture for commercial. It was residential, and so, it's, we want something that's going to last for years to come. There's been a good bit of interest in corporate hangars. So, basically, we would provide a land lease and people would build their own corporate or box hanger for their planes. We have several, or there are two areas right now that we could build without having to add additional infrastructure, such as the taxi lane, you know, if they wanted restroom facilities. We already have all of the water and sewer there for them. And so, I'm working now to develop a ground lease and our policies and procedures for putting those in place. Working with our FBO as well to relocate the fuel farm that's currently on the apron. It's kind of prime real estate, and we need to move that kind of out of sight, out of mind so that, you know, it could be future office development there or hanger for, you know, some of our corporate, corporate users. So, we just completed this past year a new taxi lane, and our FBO will be constructing a new T-hanger that will be located there. We're going to, for this year, after the masters, we're going to demo our two oldest hangars that are on the facility, and we will replace that with a new apron paving. So, we're, we're working on, you know, making our airport as accessible and as, you know, available for, you know, whoever would like to come in. As part of that, we've spoken with the FAA, they've kind of reprioritized our, our list of capital projects for us, which is, which is good because now they've moved up runway rehabbing and, you know, redevelopment. And so, we will be asking for money this year for designing the 725, which is our 5,500-foot runway. And then the next year, we will, or next two years, we will be constructing that runway for heavier planes to be able to come in and land at our airport, and then we'll follow in with taxis, or taxiways as well.
And remember, those grants, the FAA pays, typically pays 90% of the cost. The state aeronautics pays 5%, so the city is only on the, responsible for an additional 5%. So, that, that helps being able to get some of these larger projects complete.
Well, except for this year. So, it was part of the, the CARES Act, we received full funding for our apron expansion project. So, which, which sets aeronautics up, sets on the aeronautics up for actually a little bit more funding to provide for later years to come since they'll be hit by the fuel cost.
Yeah, we were fortunate that we did get some of this, I mean, we got several, I think, because of COVID and CARES, several additional funding streams from FAA.
Right, so we, we haven't received the, the grant invitation yet, but we will, we've been awarded $9,000 just as part of GA, being a general aviation airport, but that's another, you know, funding source that we received from FAA this year for CARES. So, you know, it is helping us out with operations, utilities, those type things, so we can put, reinvest money back into the airport. So, that's, that's kind of where we are with those funding sources.
What happens to the furniture that you switch out? Is that put up for sale somewhere or thrown in a warehouse or what?
So, on the other end of the airport terminal is, was the old FBO office, and so, that furniture is even more dated than that one's in the lobby now. So, we're going to use some of those pieces, and we're working with an interior designer to, you know, to make it look like it should. And we're probably, as part of that restroom renovation on the other end of the terminal, we're going to freshen up the, that area as, as much as we can with the funding that we have.
Well, you know, some people's trash is other people's treasures, so you know.
Yep, we would, most likely, furniture that we don't have a need for would be put up for sale at a bargain sale price.
Done deal.
Similar to how we've done before.
Joy, I have, jogged my memory, seems like when I was a planning commissioner, with some of these FAA grants, you have to be on the list that goes year, you keep re-upping year, re-upping year. Am I, did I misremember that or is that correct?
That is correct. So, when I said that they reprioritized our projects, we had perimeter fencing and land acquisitions for this year, and they said that that is not their priority. So, they moved it to the bottom of the list and moved up our runway rehabilitation.
I, I remembered that because I would look at those things and I'd say, well, how did that get just taken and put somewhere else? But now, now, after that, now I understand and how things get reprioritized. So, you have to be tenacious and patient, and thank you for doing that.
So, every year, we submit a five-year plan to the FAA so that once, you know, funding is available, we can, they'll basically be able to provide that for us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, moving along, we were presented a couple meetings back, back first try-on with So moving along, we were presented a couple meetings back, back first try-on with our projects over the next 20 years. And I know you're not going to be able to see this, I don't think this is on here.
Could you have printed this any smaller?
I had to get out new glasses.
No, I had, no.
I had to buy new step up.
Boy, my trombone is not long enough.
But I presented it, but our department had retreat, I had big plan sheets. And everybody was, you know, like, oh, my gosh. So we have, for the first five years, basically $335 million worth of projects that, you know, these are needs that we've identified. This includes our water treatment plant. It includes work out at Exit 22 for our sewer, gravity sewer line that we're looking to do, which would actually connect over to Highway 19 at Exit 18, you know, so that we could expand for those areas for redevelopment. It includes Whiskey Road and all of the projects that go along with this. And so, yes, it's a big number. No, we don't expect for it all to be funded. We would love for it to, but, but this is, you know, these are needs, like I said, that we have identified. We've had, we have our water and sewer models that have been returned back to us, you know, showing us what our needs are and, you know, basically recommendations for capital replacements. And so we've included as much of this information here as we can and tried to gauge what area of town is going to, you know, receive the best growth. Right now is, you know, the north side is getting a lot of attention. We're putting in a lot of infrastructure. But, you know, also the east side is also, is basically getting ready to explode. You know, we have several developments that are looking to come in, which is kind of where we were, you know, thinking the Recreation Forest name. That's one of those, those projects that needs to happen because most of the sewer from that area, they go to the Recreation Lip Station. So if we can relieve some of that capacity, it'll buy us some time before we have to upgrade our Recreation Lip Station, which is a $2 million project, not a million dollar project. And so, you know, we're trying to be smart about this, trying to prioritize, trying to look, you know, it could be push this project out several years, you know. How do we make all this work?
Okay, I want to speak for a minute.
We do have these needs.
Thank you.
So I don't know whether you've had a chance to review the projects, if you have any questions, suggestions?
I have some suggestions without, but I've got too many questions to ask in this meeting, so I'll get to you later, you and Stuart.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, I know. You included everything. No, I appreciate that. I appreciated that.
You know, probably a year ago, we presented some projects to the AMDC, and knowing it wasn't a complete list of projects. And I've been, I've been a real advocate for this because you don't know what you can fund until you know what you need. And so, you know, once you have your needs identified and you can put a educated or a true cost towards it, then you can plan when you will have your funding available to be able to do the project.
That's right.
And so, you know, it's important to be able to see this in black and white so that we know where we're going.
This extends over to 2040.
Yes.
We'll all be.
There's always new needs. There's always emergency. And so those, yes, you have some.
I'm sure we'll all be on campus.
Things always come up, so that's where we are. Have any questions?
Thank you, Joy. Good job. Thank you, Joy.
Good job, Joy. Thank you.
Lex, come on down.
And while Lex is coming down, again, a reminder, for those of you, we will have a brief ceremonial flipping of the switch of the Morgan Fountain, which the test went very well today from the, from what I saw.
That's at 9:00?
9:30.
9:30.
And it'll last maybe 20 minutes, if that.
That's tomorrow?
Maybe 15, because I've got to get those.
That's right, but it'll, it'll be very quick. But it, 9:30 right there in that Parkway area, in that intersection with Lawrence and Park.
It looks great. That really looks good.
I think it came out really good.
Lex, good afternoon. Thank you for being with us today.
Good afternoon. I appreciate you all letting me speak with you a little bit about public services this evening. So I'd like to give you an idea of how things are going, what people need to do, and try to have some power upgrades and things of that nature. So we'll, if we're ready to get started, I'll jump right in, Stuart.
Absolutely.
Let's start by talking a little bit about solid waste. When I say solid waste, that includes garbage, recycling, and yard debris. I started with solid waste because I think we can grab about it a little bit this year. So we've, we've seen a lot of improvements over the last 18 months or so, especially in regards to our route times and things of that nature. When I started 18 months ago, it wasn't unusual at all for us to be finishing up the routes 7:00 p.m., 8:00 p.m., sometimes even later. Our new normal is finishing our routes, you know, more, more often than not in the 3:00 o'clock hour and having the landfill be used back to the shop more, more on the lines at 5:00 p.m. So that's, that's been a tremendous improvement. We have you all to thank for a lot of that, you know, the footment and whatnot that has been afforded to us has made a, a big difference.
How many people we save with those new trucks?
Most of those, those folks are doing other duties.
Right.
It's not as if we, you know, aren't, aren't still utilizing them, but, you know, we now are running most days six automated trucks. So we would have had 12 folks on the back of those trucks typically, you know, most of those folks are doing other duties.
So we have 12 positions we've reassigned?
Yeah, we utilize them in different ways. A lot of them are still helping with the routes, but they're helping instead on the back of the trucks. They're doing different things. So that's one of the reasons that we've been able to speed up our efficiencies. So, and that's been great. Now, as y'all know, yard debris kind of has its seasons. We have a leaf season that's always a huge challenge for us, and we have a spring surge. You know, that's a challenge for us as well. In years past, you know, with yard debris, it was not uncommon for us to go from a normal four-day week to work in a five- or six-day week, like to dark. In this past leaf season, which we feel like is, is wrapped up at this point, more often than not, we're only running four-day weeks. And to be honest, we did many days where we were finishing the day's routes early in the afternoon and getting a jump on the next day's routes where we could go and kind of chip away at the places that, that we knew were always our bad spots. So we've, we've seen a lot of improvement there. If you compare our overtime at this point in the year to last point in the same, you know, same timeframe, we're down about 34% in overtime. So we feel like things are going, you know, better than could be expected in, in solid waste at this point. Moving on to the next slide.
Hate to interrupt, but I've got one other question.
Sure.
We, we all agreed to put in controls on what people put in the ARs and the piles. Has any of that happened or?
Oh, yes. Absolutely. It's, it's definitely helping. So adjustments to yard debris and as far as the changes in the ordinance have definitely made it more manageable and, you know, as we expected. So we do appreciate those changes and it's helped a lot.
You getting any pushback from people on it?
I don't, I don't think anything that we wouldn't have expected. I mean, anytime you have a change, we get some pushback, but more often than not, when we had the opportunity to explain to them what we're trying to accomplish, most folks have been very reasonable, so.
And the same with putting the cans at, placing them properly?
Well, that's taking a little bit more time. I guess those habits are, are hard to break. But we, we made tremendous progress with that and we're continuing to, to see improvements there, but it's gotten much, much better.
Good.
Now, we do expect to see further efficiency gains as we go along with this. We added our last, two most recent automated side loading trucks to the fleet in December. And, and seeing how the other ones did and how it took folks several months to, you know, reach their, their maximum potential as far as how fast they could go, we know that we still have some efficiencies to gain there, so we're looking forward to that.
The fact that your overtime is down 34%, I mean, that says a lot. That says a lot.
I, I think so too. It's definitely a good sign. We don't want to take all the credit for that, you know, and that we did have a pretty, we're pretty fortunate in the weather this year and, and the leaf season and it being more of a constant dropping than, you know, such a surge maybe all in a week or two, which we did experience last year. But I like to think that, you know, some of the improvements certainly from us running it more efficiently. So I think we've got a combination there. We've talked a lot, you know, about recycling in the last year or so, as you know. Back in August, we started taking our recycling to the North Augusta Merck. That, that's going fairly well for us, honestly. We've been averaging almost 100 tons per month that's going to North Augusta, you know. So when you look at that and project it out for a year, our costs are going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 of what we pay to North Augusta to process that recycling. Now, I'm sure we had some losses in regards to efficiency because that is a longer drive for us and that takes some time. But as you can see, we've more than made up for that in other areas, being that we're finishing hours earlier than we had in years past. So there was some give and take there for sure, but we've made the best of it thus far. I wanted to, to share with y'all some programs that we've been working on that I'm not sure that you're aware of. Coincidentally, we started, you know, taking our recycling to North Augusta in August of 2021. We also started working with another landfill for yard debris in August of 2021. The Williams C and D landfill, which is located in Graniteville on Rainbow Falls Road. We met with them and they had some interest in utilizing some of the yard debris that we're picking up and we're taking to the Barnum C and D landfill that was basically being buried in the county landfill. They had some interest in transforming that yard debris into compost and into mulch and things of that nature. For us, it's proven to be a win-win seven months in. We were hopeful, you know, that we would be able to get about 25% of the yard debris that we were taking to the Barnum landfill to be buried to be able to be composted. And if, if we got to 25%, we're projecting that'd be about 2,900 tons. In our most recent month that we wrapped the numbers on, which would be January, we took 48% of our yard debris to the Williams landfill. So that kept 395 tons of material from getting buried. And instead of getting buried, it's getting, you know, the opportunity to be turned into compost, to be turned into mulch and to be turned into something useful. So we see that as being a win for our citizens, you know, the citizens of Aiken, the city of Aiken, or also the citizens of Aiken County. So we're saving that much material from going into Aiken County landfill.
Do we pay them for that?
No, sir. We're not paying them for that at all. So that's, that's not a cost to us. In fact, we feel like it's actually helped us gain in some efficiencies because our turnaround time at that particular landfill is much better because there's much pure use there. So.
How much space do they have?
I would hate to guess the number of acres, but it's a large landfill. And I don't believe that, you know, we're taxing them to a great degree.
Okay.
And one of the efficiencies that we really weren't expecting is that we're turning around the trucks there in about five minutes, like from entry to exit, which at the Barnum landfill was more like 15 to 20 minutes. So we're, every truck we send out there, we're getting a little bit of time. Now, there's some things that we can't take out there. We, we kind of refer to our loads as either clean or dirty. You know, clean would be all vegetated material and would be something that we would take to them. If it's, if it contains appliances, if it contains furniture, or if it contains plastic bags, it's going to the county landfill because those things can't be composted. So I'm not standing before you tonight to tell you or to even ask you that we need to get rid of the plastic bags that some folks put their yard debris in. But I do want you to be aware that if we didn't have that in the string, meaning that they were using a paper bag instead, we would take a lot more material to this other option, this Williams C and D landfill. So that's something that I, I think it's good for us to know or maybe at some point consider. Because I do think it's good for the environment. And to give us some context when we're talking about these numbers, it's kind of hard to, you know, to wrap your head around, well, how much material is that? Well, even if you're at that 25% number, you know, that we're shooting for the 2,900 tons, that's about three times the weight of material that we're currently recycling. Okay? So we are talking about a huge volume of material that we're keeping out of the landfill by using this Williams C and D option. So I think it's something we should be proud of for sure.
Lex, when do we get the MOU with them? You say you plan to develop one.
Well, I mean, that's.
Is that going to happen?
We don't have a deadline to that. You know, we were kind of feeling each other out to see, you know, if it was going to be a good, good relationship for both of us. In our perspective, it's been good for the city and it's been good for our citizens. We feel like by the feedback we've got from them, it's been good for them as well. And, you know, I think we're at the, the point that I just need to sit down and talk with them and see where that goes. And, you know, maybe there'll be some opportunities for us to benefit from their agreement in other ways. I mean, in the same department, you know, that I'm overseeing, we have a grounds division that uses a lot of compost, uses a lot of mulch. So I think there could be some give and take there for when they benefit in other ways. Any other questions on that? Okay. I also wanted to, to make y'all aware of a, a new litter program that began in January of 2021. It's, it's getting off to somewhat of a slow start due to COVID. But we're working with the city court, the city solicitor's office, and Calmetta Five. We're working together with our public services department so that some of the folks that were at the city court, the, the judge is going to have an option instead of potentially fining them or giving them community service hours. Okay? And those community service hours, they're going to be able to, to come and onboard with our public services division, and we're going to oversee a program. In fact, we're, we're doing that now where we'll send them out, you know, with the equipment and whatnot that they need and, and assignments to pick up litter along the City of Aiken roadways.
I've been wondering about these guys. I've been seeing them with the yellow vests on.
But they do, they do have bright colored vests.
Yeah.
Now, we've only, we had our first person go all the way through it, and she did about 48 hours worth of litter pickup, 56 bags, and cleaned up nine miles of City of Aiken roadways, both sides of the road.
How do you identify where they go next?
Well, we have, we've really sat down and developed a spreadsheet where we've identified the areas that we know need, need a lot of.
I've got a couple of streets to give you.
I'd be happy to, to take that input. I, I feel like we'll, we'll probably have a lot of them that match, but I'd be happy to look at any that you got. But we did, we developed, I mean, I don't even know how many different stretches of roadway that, that we've got, but it's, I mean, it's probably more than 30, you know, that we've already identified. And we're excited about this program. It's a program that's already in place at Aiken County. At Aiken County, it's grown to the point that they've got one COVID enforcement officer who, it's pretty much his full-time job during the program. So we, we feel like there's a lot of potential there. And it, as y'all all know, litter's a problem and there's not one solution to it, but this can be part of the solution.
Well, I, as a matter of fact, I spoke to Stuart about, two months ago, about the city actually started a, a program. And so you, you way ahead of me. And so you, you way ahead of me. But I also asked, uh, why don't we have signs up saying, you know, that they'll be fine if they continue, if they're caught littering? And I know catching them is pretty hard, but, um, I used to get people tags and I'm tag number when I saw them doing it. So what can we do as a city? Can we have signs put up on the different streets, especially the main, um, roadways? Stand?
Yeah. Yep. That is something I think we could identify areas where there are, uh, you know, high traffic volume and put, put up some of those signs. And I know, I think when you and I talked, we were about ready to implement this, and I, I have to compliment that, uh, our former staff attorney, uh, before she left in, uh, November got that project going. But yes, the signage, um, is something that we could, uh, place, um, and have some conversations with, uh, DOT about best places to put them. I, I would probably recommend primarily the state primary highways, uh, you know, 118 bypass and, um, you know, highway one, uh, as opposed to in, um, in neighborhoods. But, but yes, that is something that, uh, we can do, and I know we had that conversation and, um, we, I've had some very minimal discussion, uh, with, with everything else, but that's something we can put new to the front burner.
Well, we're, we're really encouraged by the potential of this program and we hope that, that it's really going to take off for us. Uh, the next program that I want to, uh, make you aware of is, is just really getting started, um, front of the committee, we want to say, uh, we've been thinking about this for the last year or so, and we recognize just how deeply connected our citizens are to the, the trees in Aiken. Um, you know, I think, I, I've always known that. I think my eyes were even open to it even more, uh, when we were dealing with Maid Marian, you know, about 14 years ago now, I guess. Um, Aaron and I, Aaron Campbell is our, our ground supervisor, have been talking about how we could help build a, a greater legacy for the trees in Aiken. And, um, in, in talking about it, we wanted to, um, to start propagating off some of these grand and significant trees. You know, we had the Bartlett tree study, uh, not too many years ago, and they, they identified, you know, the most valuable trees in Aiken. And we thought it would just be a, a, a very neat program if, if we started propagating off those trees and our southbounder trees and potentially even some of our arboretum to, to help supplement the supply of the trees that we replant all the time, because we replant many trees throughout the year. And we thought it could be something that the community, uh, would enjoy and would get behind to know that the trees that we're replanting with are actually the offspring, you know, of these famous Aiken legacy trees. And at, at a minimum, we see it as being a way that we can supplement what we plant and what we can contribute at events like Earth Day, you know? Imagine, you know, a, a grandchild, you know, leaving that event, you know, with a, a southbounder oak, you know, to go home and plant in their yard. Um, so at a minimum, we see it as a supply of trees for us, something great for events like that, but potentially, you know, in the future, who knows? You know, uh, depending on how we could grow it, it could potentially be, uh, a way to supplement revenue to some degree, to help fund some of the Aiken tree programs. I think, um, I don't think we'd have a hard time getting somebody to overpay for a southbounder oak, you know, or a Maid Marian oak, you know, or something along those lines. So the first step in this is us getting, um, a greenhouse set up, which, um, we'll be doing in, in the, between now and the end of this fiscal year, and it'll be a program that we're looking to, to grow into the future. Okay. A little bit about our central downtown business district. Um, I don't know if y'all are aware of it, but, uh, when I say central downtown business district, we're talking about the alley, Delane, Newbury Street, Lawrence from Barnwell to, uh, Richland Avenue, Pendleton Street from Park to Richland. Uh, these areas, um, for several years, they were taken care of, um, by another entity, um, that, that we had a contract with to take care of them. The public services grounds division started taking, uh, that back over in October of the previous year. Uh, I'd like to think that we made a lot of improvements, uh, in the maintenance of that area in, in the time that we've been taking care of it. Uh, one of the requests that you'll see, assuming that Stuart agrees with it, um, in our budget, uh, that's coming up, is going to be for, um, a downtown sidewalk sweeper, which at times in the past, the city has had, but it's been quite a few years, uh, since we've, we've had one of those. Uh, we do have depreciation funds set aside that will make purchasing that, uh, not quite as painful. Um, but we see this as a way that we can raise the bar a little bit downtown, have a little higher, uh, attention to detail level. Um, so that's going to be one of the requests that you see from us in the coming year.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wolf.
You know, I, I'd like to point out downtown is important, and we let, uh, many restaurants and all use our sidewalks. It seems to me they should be responsible for cleaning up after themselves. I can think of one or two that do a pretty good job, but there's quite a few that don't. And, and I think we should, they, they should help in that. They, they benefit from it from the money they bring in on their food sales and their beer sales and stuff, and, and, uh, they're not paying any rent, they're getting free space. It's not too much to ask them to clean up, take care of it, and do it. And if we have to mandate it, maybe we do, but other cities do that, and it certainly keeps clean and makes their job a lot easier too. But if you've ever come downtown early in the morning on a Sunday to go for a walk or bike ride or something, it can look pretty nasty sometimes. So I would just like to throw that out there for a thought, and we might, might address it later on.
And we could take a look at how some of, some other city ordinances, other cities' ordinances to that effect, uh, to review and, uh, present how other cities do it to kind of take and get the appetite, no pun intended, of council, uh, on whether or not to pursue that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I've, I've seen other cities maintain those areas. That is the responsibility of the, the city. Uh, it can be done both ways. You can leave the ownership up to those merchants that own the business or have some staff, and I don't know how they fund these staff folks that are, uh, traveling, even going to Columbia. There are certain streets that you travel down that every day somebody is ensuring that the, um, the litter is controlled very early in the morning, and I've gone early in the morning to meetings, and these two people are out just picking up the, the litter.
Yeah.
Ensuring that it's, it's clean.
They could empty their trash can and do that.
Yeah.
The last request that you'll see from us, um, in the, the coming budget is going to be for, uh, an additional employee, uh, second tree trimmer. Um, right now, we have only one tree trimmer, uh, for the entire city of Aiken, and I keep him, um, very, very busy. Um, you know, I was trying to think just how many I would need to be at the point where I didn't keep him busy, and I'm not sure what that number is, but I know it's more than two. Um, so, you know, we're, we're going to be bringing that request to you, uh, with our budget request, you know, there's a necessity for the roadways, the city properties, uh, the parkways that we take care of. Um, we're, we're doing our best to be proactive, uh, but often we find ourselves being reactive to these needs. And, I mean, I know many of you are aware of it, you know, y'all, y'all have helped us calling in, you know, things that you see, asking us to, to address them, so, um, we get a, a lot out of that position currently. It's a very productive role.
What's the salary for that position?
Uh, that, the salary for that position, as it's currently put together, would, would start at about $31,000. So, and I think that cost to some degree would be offset, um, by a reduced dependency on contractors because we do, um, we, we do a lot of work with tree contractors in addition to the work that we, uh, do in-house. So now, having a second one wouldn't completely get rid of that because it's not always a staffing or equipment issue, um, for why we use those, um, contractors, but it would, it would minimize it to some degree.
He does a good job.
He does. He's, he's, he's very good at what he does. He's got a ton of experience. Um, he's a colorful character as well. Um, you know, just that in general, some of the things that we're working on at public services is just continuing to build systems, city pride, and attention to detail. I hope that y'all see that, that we're making improvements. I think the last year and a half we really have, and, and I, I fully expect that that's going to continue, so.
Speaking of city pride, um, as we talked about, wait, John, as we talked about litter, if you're walking with the mayor, if he sees litter, he is going to stop and pick it up and find a trash can to put it in. He can't walk by it, see something that's there. And oftentimes, we get busy, we don't notice, but he notices, uh, it readily in terms of what's there.
We, we appreciate the help for sure on that, and, um, we would love to address litter more, more than we are currently doing. Um, we do dedicate staff to that as time allows. In, in the month of February, we had a crew, um, that we were able to dedicate most of their month to picking up litter, and they picked up over 9,500 pounds of litter in the city of Aiken in February a lot. So we gave you that every month. When the growing season gets here, it gets much, much more challenging, but, um, we had a good February.
I just want to touch on Paul's question about the sidewalk and restaurant. The current city code that allows, uh, cafes or restaurants to have tables on sidewalks does have a language in it that says that, um, merchant, no merchant shall, uh, fail to pick up, remove, and dispose of all trash or refuse left by the business on the, on the sidewalk. So that language is in the city code, uh, city manager may want to just simply send the litter out in our restaurants that have permits to have, uh, tables on sidewalks?
Yep.
Just a friendly reminder.
And what we, that's a good point, and, uh, we will be having a meeting, I think, with the ones you're speaking of, for downtown, when we, as we migrate to the compactor, we're going to have a meeting with all of these folks, so that would be a good time to reiterate that.
Yeah. Y'all have any questions, Amey, at this time?
I'll say this, Lex, hopefully I've told you this in person, but to say it in public, it is a stark contrast from when you took this over to where we are now, and especially in yard debris. You do a great job, and I appreciate it very much.
We'll try to keep it going.
I spoke to him earlier and echoed those same things, that he, and what you've accomplished has just been amazing. And, uh, with this litter, I hope there's a new groups that are forming, and I've talked to some of the people and some of the, my constituents have called it. You know, it takes not just you doing it, it takes everybody, and it takes a cultural change. We have to work through the schools so that they, you know, it has to start early so that they understand about that. But thank you for what you do and your crew. They're always, I mean, you see them on the street, they wave, they smile, they say hello, they're always very courteous, they're working hard.
Yeah, we're lucky. We really do have a good team.
The Lex, the, the efficiencies that we're seeing are really remarkable and, and certainly appreciated by, by this council. Um, you, you wouldn't mind giving us maybe a quick timeline, maybe for the, the compactor that we're, we're looking?
We have a compactor board. Um, we had an electrician out looking at the site today, um, we're, we're going to pull that, you know, the compactor will, will be installed and, and ready to, to operate before the end of April.
Very good. I guess mute and mute on that. I'm going to mute. No, no.
Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Great, great job, Lex. I'm going to start a talk.
Lex, tell your daughter congratulations on the new certification.
Yes, ma'am, I will. Thank you.
Stuart, I think this might be a good time for us to go into executive session. I think, uh.
Let me take a short break.
Yes.
Stretch our legs.
Yes. So absolutely, Mr. Mayor. And I know we've got it set up a little more informal, uh, to social distance, uh, to, to sit down in the well during executive session with, uh, some of the, the folks.
At 6:30, we'll, um, we'll convene to go into executive session at 6:40.